Hello, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Supervisors. February 21st. We're still waiting for our chair.
I've called him twice and he hasn't responded. But yeah, he has not responded to my calls. Have you guys talked to him at all? Yeah, and he hasn't responded any of the texts, right?
I sent the group text to you.
Yeah, yeah.
Not a response from James.
Hope everything's okay. Fred, do you want to call the meeting to order then?
Yeah, let me, let me call the meeting. It seems like we do have three people, so. As Vice Chair, I'll call the meeting to order. And let's all say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Even though we have a quorum, I think maybe we should wait another couple of minutes for the chair. Unless we can, Kurt, do you think we can go to public comment? Is there anybody on that?
Well, a public comment we would have at the end after Fred's, Fred Ebert's presentation, but we can announce at the beginning as far as public comment like we typically do. You can dial in. The meeting is here at the Township Building. We're hybrid. You can dial 646-558-8656. Then you would enter the prompt 2309361902. That is also available on the agenda on the website. So that's all I have.
Okay. James didn't tell anybody he was not going to be at the meeting today? Okay. All right, so as we have a quorum, we'll do a roll call. Supervisor Blondie.
I don't know if you can hear me, but I'm here.
Supervisor Lewis.
I'm here.
Supervisor Graniere, not here. Supervisor Cartney. Not here. I'm here. We do have a quorum. We'll go to item four, purpose of the special study. I guess Fred Ebert, me and Brad Engineering, you want to give us an answer to that? Why is this required?
Okay, um, why it's required, it's PAD requirement. Whenever there is a change in how the public sewer or how wastewater is managed and handled within Lower Makefield Township. That obligation is and will always remain Lower Makefield Township's responsibility to do that. In this case, there is a potential, or there is a selected alternative to sell the public sanitary sewer system that Lower Makefield Township owns in Lower Makefield. The sale of the sewer system does not impact the portion of Lower Makefield Township that the Township of Falls Authority owns and maintains. That's not a subject to the sale. So what the change is going to be through the sale is the institutional implementation of the Act 537 Plan, which basically identifies who owns, operates the public sanitary sewer system. And in this situation, Lower Makefield Township has entered into an agreement of sale, which will be consummated in the near future. Prior to that, DEP requires us, requires Lower Makefield Township to amend its Act 537 Plan to identify that Lower Makefield Township will no longer be the owner and operator of the sewer facilities and that it will now be Aqua Pennsylvania Wastewater Inc. So what they want to evaluate is making sure that the existing public sewer, that the customers of that will not be impacted and that anyone that comes in here will have a full understanding of who will own, operate, who the customers will pay their bills to, who will take responsibility for all the existing intermunicipal contracts and agreements and other contracts that are associated with this. It also identifies, you know, what changes will be made as far as who will now be reviewing land development plans with respect to sanitary sewer that will also have to comply with the Township Code, that the actual public portion will be subject to Aqua Pennsylvania's review and approval and developers will have to comply with that. That there will be, but that the private portion of the public sewer system, which we had described previously as being behind the right-of-way line as part of the lateral ordinance or behind, outside of an easement, will still remain under the jurisdiction of Lower Makefield Township and will not be impacted by that. So really what, why this is required is so that way when someone looks at the 537 Plan for Lower Makefield Township, they know and understand and it identifies and documents who owns, operates and maintains the public sanitary sewer system. That Lower Makefield Township will always be responsible for the identification of the public sewer service area. But the implementation of the public sanitary sewer system will change from Lower Makefield Township to the Aqua Pennsylvania. This is most often done when we have a sale of sewer system. It is also done when there is the establishment of an authority. I have a township that is now creating an authority and they're doing a similar special study to identify that the township will no longer be responsible, but that in fact, the newly created authority will be responsible. So with that said, it's primarily an institutional evaluation, implementation of it. And what DEP is concerned about is that the, all the agreements are assigned to Aqua Pennsylvania, that there is no lack of service, that they fully step into the shoes of Lower Makefield Township, can carry out the duties of Lower Makefield Township, that they have qualified staff to be able to own, operate, that they have financial people that will be able to bill, collect bills and be able to ensure that everyone pays with a long toll, that it will be able to be operated to the same level as when Lower Makefield Township had. The next item is, what are the limited changes to this, to the Act 537 Plan? The biggest thing is that there is no change in the public sewer service area, that the entire township is still identified to be publicly sewer. There are existing onlot systems that have not connected yet, but they have the opportunity to connect by their. The, it doesn't change any population projections. It doesn't change any, doesn't create any new pump stations, any new sewer service areas. It doesn't change where people, if you're currently serviced by Morrisville, you remain in Morrisville, they're not changing any of the service areas in any way such that there is no change to the people. Basically, the change will be that they will now be customers of Aqua Pennsylvania, that they will now be, their bills will now be regulated by the PUC. The township will no longer be responsible for the operation and maintenance so that if there's an issue with any of the operation and maintenance, it will now be the responsibility of Aqua Pennsylvania. Aqua Pennsylvania will be responsible for any overflows, reporting them. Preparation of the Chapter 94 reports will now become there. Any planning modules that will come before this board or sewage facilities planning exemptions, the sewer treatment, or excuse me, the sewer conveyance capacity will have to be certified by Aqua and all the treatment will still remain with either Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority or Morrisville as far as certifying the treatment capacity. So there are no changes with that. You know, they are, and the most important thing is that even though you're selling your sewer system, you still control and they cannot change who is servicing there. They cannot change the sewer service area that goes to Morrisville to send everything to Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority, or send all the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority flows over there. That responsibility and obligation remains with Lower Makefield Township. Act 537 planning will always be part of Lower Makefield Township. The lateral ordinance will remain with Lower Makefield Township. The operation maintenance agreements with any low-pressure systems and individual grinder pumps will remain with Lower Makefield Township. So with that said, as to why we have to do it and what the purpose of that is, is for us to demonstrate to DEP, and it's not to demonstrate DEP, it's to provide documentation of this change. That's primarily what it is. DEP is not judging this on whether it's a good decision or bad decision to sell the system. They simply need to have Lower Makefield identify it. So when someone looks at the official sewage facilities plan for Lower Makefield Township, that they understand that it's no longer owned by Lower Makefield Township and/or previously their authority, that it's now owned, operated, maintained, and all contractual obligations have been taken care of by Aqua Pennsylvania.
Excuse me, Fred, just, just a question for you. This process is undergone, been undergone in other places, correct? In other words, Aqua purchasing assistance from a municipality, I'm gonna, there's two I'm aware of and I'm sure there are many more. For example, East Norton in Montgomery County and Cheltenham Township in Montgomery County too. Are you familiar with both of those?
Yes, I am.
And they, and they also went through the whole, the, the special study process and it was the same basic format that we're talking about tonight. Is that correct?
That is correct. And DEP reached out with a letter telling, explaining that and used both of those as examples to do that, our special study very closely, you know. The format is the same on all of them. The requirements are there for anyone that is selling their sewer system or assigning it to an authority or becoming part of a regional authority if a township phases out and gives it. And in all cases, it's almost exactly the same. It's simply the identification of who is going to be the owner and operator and how does that impact the residents, making sure that there will be no lack of service, that all the contractual obligations will be there and that a person moving in or an existing resident can look up this as our official document, which identifies all of this. Next item is what I'll call the executive summary of.
Excuse me, Fred. I have a question. I'm a little confused. So if the township is responsible for the 537 Plan, even though we no longer own it, what happens if Aqua's not compliant? What, what, what is our, what do we have in our toolbox to enforce the 537 Plan?
The enforcement actually comes from DEP. So DEP will then basically pull in Aqua and make them do that, but they ultimately have the ability to go into a consent order and agreement with Aqua for compliance. If they don't voluntarily enter into the consent order and agreement, DEP can take action against them for not implementing the 537 Plan. Normally when you hear this is a developer going after a township for not implementing that. But DEP will go after Aqua and say, you have to do this. If Aqua were to say that we're not going to allow someone to connect to the public sewer service and there is no connection management plan or connection management plan or corrective action plan for that, they can't do that. They have to allow that. Our entire system is. Aqua can't go outside and service and change the service areas without ours. So DEP can go back after that. DEP can also go after them and, and state that they are, they are required to be able to implement our plan. And if they aren't effectively implementing the Act 537 Plan, then DEP takes enforcement actions against them to force them to implement that. There's actually a situation in another township that we previously mentioned where connections are being limited due to overflows. DEP is taking enforcement actions against Aqua Pennsylvania to make sure they're taking the necessary corrective actions to be able to implement their 537 and provide service as envisioned, identified and defined by Lower Makefield Township in its Act 537 Plan. This also gives Lower Makefield Township the ability to notify because occupants may only implements the plan. So if there is a major change in a zoning change, that you guys were to change an area where you were to either drastically reduce the density and proposed density by purchasing a large amount of open space or you were to rezone to a significantly higher density. We, Lower Makefield Township would have to document that by updating their Act 537 Plan and then provide that to Aqua Pennsylvania. Once approved, will be provided to occupants to implement that and then to obtain the necessary treatment and conveyance capacity and charge the resident and charge the people for that and establish that. So there will be a partnership with Aqua Pennsylvania on all future Act 537 Plans. No one's going to jam something down without their input. They have the ability to input, to have input into it. But ultimately, whether or not you were to change a sewer service area remains with you. If Aqua Pennsylvania were not implemented, then DEP would ultimately come down on them for the enforcement of implementing your 537 Plan to meet the needs of your community. One of the concerns is, is that if there's a growth area that somehow the township will be limited in its ability to do a zoning change to allow a project that they wanted to have go through because there wasn't sewer capacity. So your enforcement action against Aqua Pennsylvania will be to modify your Act 537 Plan and then have DEP enforce it against Aqua. So you still control, and that's the most important thing here, is that the control of the Act 537 Plan. is that the control of the Act 537 Plan is not only a planning tool, but it's an implementation tool so that you, the township, can implement your SALDO, your zoning and any changes to it and your comprehensive plan. Uh, so that as comprehensive plans change, zoning plans change, um, large development that you had never anticipated comes through, that was allowed by Zoom. Um, hospital comes in on an area that you thought was going to be single family houses and has a much more intensive use, but it's allowed by Zoom. That may be a, a large enough modification that it would be handled through what's known as a planning module, which in essence modifies your Act 537 Plan. You as a township have to review and approve that Act, that, that planning module. Um, to be able to go through. And as part of that, there is input by Aqua Pennsylvania primarily on the conveyance of, of, of sewer through its lines. Um, but then also making sure that they are purchasing the required treatment capacity or participating in a treatment plan expansion, um, in Morrisville or additional capacity from the city of Philadelphia or reduction of I N I in there. Um, the Act 537 Plan also gives you guys the ability, um, you know, to enact, you know, to make sure that they don't leave the system go and there's excessive I N I after we've just spent, you know, significant monies in the last, you know, two years, uh, to remove that. Um, it also keeps the obligation, uh, for, uh, the lateral ordinance with you and the enforcement and the responsibility for that. Um, you know, that's an obligation that remains with the township that, uh, I know Aqua Pennsylvania, um, definitely looked at and definitely evaluated a, in their purchase of the system. The fact that we are taking proactive steps that for things that they could not control, that the township was willing to control to keep its operating costs as low as possible for all of its customers, whether they're being billed, uh, by Lower Makefield as they are today or whether they will be billed by, uh, Aqua Pennsylvania in the future.
Fred Weiss, can I ask, there's not a spot in here, questions from the manager, but do you mind since he made a point that I asked a real quick question of Fred?
Point of order.
Sure.
I thought we were supposed to go through the, the questions by the board of supervisors, it doesn't appear to, uh, agenda item eight.
Well, then I'll wait till then if that's okay with the chair.
I, my assumption is that we would let, uh, the township or the sewer engineer complete this presentation.
Well, we haven't even gotten to the presentation yet.
No, no, uh.
We're, 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 we're.
Number four.
What for is purpose of the special study? Why, A, A, A is why is this required? And B is the limited to the changes. But the executive summary and the actual presentation hasn't been done yet. So I, I think it's appropriate to get the, everybody on the same page before we continue the presentation or start the presentation so that we know exactly what we're, we're dealing with. So Fred, I said one more, I just want to. I want to summarize and if I'm wrong, you, please correct me. If. So the township is, it's still the township's 537 Plan. Aqua is responsible for implementing it. The township is, can be, can change it if needs changed and township through the SALDO and then we're basically partners with Aqua to making sure that whatever needs to be done is being done appropriately. Is that kind of a?
Yeah, that's exactly, a, a, a very good summary of that, 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 that their responsibility of that remains with you guys. Basically, and it has to, because ultimately the township has a vision for its comprehensive plan, its SALDO, its zoning, and there's changes with that over time. There's always rezonings, there's conditional uses, there's things like that that impact the amount of wastewater that, that, that goes to the system or reduces it. Um, and therefore you have that, DEP recommends that you, uh, amend your, without any major changes, that you refresh and, and amend the township's Act 537 Plan every 10 years. And the primary purpose of that is that it's a living document. It's a living document that gets monitored dearly through the chapter 94 report, um, to see how it's being implemented, um, a- and to make sure that adequate capacity is there. If we reach in the chapter 94 report, which Aqua will be doing, you know, they get into a projected, uh, overload, uh, either or, uh, hydraulic overload or there's not adequate treatment capacity to meet the projected flows looking five years forward. DEP at that point will order sewage facilities planning to address that. So Aqua can't go out and get a permit or anything to make any changes without it either being consistent with the Act 537 Plan or the Act 537 Plan being amended in order to allow for that change. So Aqua can't say, we're going to build a major, um, we're going to build a treatment planning in, in, in your township. Can't do that without Act 537 Plan. They can't even upgrade a pump station, uh, without it being consistent with your Act 537 Plan. This is why we previously did the special study for the Neshamity Interceptor and how we were going to reduce our flows. We also had to adopt the Yardley Borough, um, special study, uh, when they wanted to enlarge the interceptor that flows through Yardley Borough, uh, and that we were responsible to pay for. Even though it has no construction in our thing, we have a financial obligation. Uh, and therefore Yardley Borough couldn't, can't go ahead and make a larger pipe, uh, without our approval. And, and they do have to make sure that, that it's adequately sized for our flows. If we're responsible for it, that there's an acknowledgement of not only the agreement, but that the public knows that we are entering into, that we have an agreement where we have financial responsibility to enlarge, uh, a portion of the sewer system. Um, the same thing with, you know, minor sanitary sewer, um, li- uh, line extensions don't require planning less than 250 E D Us. But something that would require township obligation would be a low pressure system where the township would maintain control of the individual grinder pumps, even though Aqua Pennsylvania would own the low pressure system, um, which I believe, um, Dogwood Drive is an example of low pressure sewer system, um, that would be in there. Um, you know, they're going to need the, uh, Act 537 Planning because there's an obligation on the township to have an agreement with individual grinder pump owners and there's an obligation on Aqua Pennsylvania that they'll take ownership of the low pressure system.
Are homeowners or the township responsible for the individual grinder pumps?
The homeowners are, but they're responsible to have an oversight agreement with the township.
Like to point of order, can we let the township or the sewer engineer complete his presentation without questions? Or guidance?
Uh, Suzanne?
Yes.
Do you have any comment one way or the other?
You know, I, I guess I kind of see both sides because I have some questions I wanted to clarify and I didn't want it to go too far because I think maybe people uh, might be misunderstanding some things and yet, you know, maybe if we let him go a little bit further on his own, we can all end up at the same place without much rancor, so. Let the baby.
Okay, so you understand uh, the difference between responsibilities and enforcement and who owns what and what happens and we can go with the presentation?
Well, to be clear, I was going to clarify who's going to send the bills because I got a little confused at that point, but I am willing to wait till agenda item number eight to, uh, dig into those details.
Okay, so no, none of the other supervisors have, uh, questions or comments of?
Mr. Chair, I do have questions, but I'm respecting the agenda and was going to wait till, uh, number, uh, eight when I could ask a question. I just wanted to be respectful of, of Fred, our sewer engineer and, and let him complete the presentation.
I appreciate that. And it's also nice to have an opportunity. If you have any miss on the, uh, you know, if you're not understanding the preliminaries that, uh, you have the chance to ask questions before he gets into the details.
Yeah, I don't mind whichever way the board wants to go. Um, you know, sometimes I know that if people have questions, they don't listen to everything else till they get their question answered and just wait for that. So I don't mind answering it, but it's a discretion of the board. You tell me how you'd like me to handle it and I will clearly follow that path.
So I guess if there's no other questions, uh, relating to, uh, the, the, the division of labor, so to speak, Fred, I guess we can go to, um, uh, I, I, Adam Five, the executive summary, uh, of the special study by the sewer engineer.
Yep, good. At its core, really what this is, a- as I previously said, is it's, it's the sale of the, not only the wastewater facilities, meaning the sanitary sewer lines, the assignment of the easements, the manholes. Um, then it goes to the responsibilities to operate and maintain the system in accordance with DEP requirements and all of our contractual obligations. There are pretty significant contractual obligations with our Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority and the Shamy Interceptor Agreement that we entered into. Um, we still have a corrective action plan that needs to be complied with and a connection management plan, of which we've done a very good job of, of staying in compliance with that. All those responsibilities will get assigned to, uh, Aqua Pennsylvania and it needs to be very clear that all of those things are assigned. So in its core, i- it's not just the facilities easements are all assigned so they have the ability to access everything. Uh, in this situation, there's no land that's transferring. It's all easements, but the actual facilities that exist within those um, are all being transferred along with the obligations to update them. Any maintenance contracts that we've entered into which exceed the timeframe of that, uh, have to be observed. Um, uh, emergency generators, we have, uh, three-year service contracts. I believe we have an existing contract with the alarm system. Um, you know, all those obligations will all transfer over and go through. So that's really making sure that, that everyone understands that and it's documented in there because DEP is not privy, would not be privy to the actual agreements, uh, that exist as well as the agreement of sale. Um, so this document puts that in the public forum, uh, for DEP which then gives them the ability, uh, to help implement that. The, um, so the sale of the sewer system i- is really just that. The change in ownership, um, i- i- it goes i- in there uh, that, um, now defines who owns it. But what the special study also does is it goes through and it confirms that the existing sewage facilities planning in the service areas and the contract areas does not change. So we specifically list that and identify that here in an executive, you know, summary style in a special study. Because a special study is a modification or amendment to your base Act 537 Plan, of which we just did the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority Service Area, then a Shamy, uh, Service Area through there. But we basically confirmed that physical, that this special study doesn't change the previous sewage facilities planning other than institutional identification of who is responsible for it. It, it documents a future growth of land development does not change. That the, it, it does identify the alternative and evaluation of alternatives. But here it's really only the institutional of who owns and operates it. Um, and not the effectiveness of them. It's more of an identification of who does that. Um, and then really what it does and the reason the document's three, is three inches thick and the written text is only about 20 pages, um, is really to identify what contracts exist. Um, and making sure that they're all identified and they're all transferred. Uh, identifying that easements will be transferred over, that are a requirement of the, uh, purchase agreement. Um, for the facilities, the obligations, so that there's nothing hidden uh, there and that DEP can rely on this when enforcing actions against Aqua Pennsylvania, um, or determining compliance. I shouldn't say negatively, determining compliance of Aqua Pennsylvania on this matter. Um, that, that it was all clearly done and it was done in a public forum. That the public's had a chance through a 30-day public comment period to comment on this. Um, this was also given to the Lower Makefield Township Planning Commission. Um, it was given to the Bucks County, uh, Health Department for their review and comment. It was given to the Bucks County Planning Commission. Um, a- as is a requirement of all Act 537 planning because it could, any Act 537 plan could impact flow projections, density, uh, zoning, all that. And, and that's why we go out for, for the outside agencies, a review. And, um, although probably not technically required in an abundance of caution, DEP and everyone else on a significant change to the institutional value, uh, institutional implementation of 537 Plan, we did a 30-day public comment period, uh, in the newspaper, uh, which ended today. Um, and not unexpectedly, there were no public comments, or very rarely are ever in this because it's very cut and dry. It's basically a complete obligation and transfer of everything over. Um, the, uh, what the 537 Plan does in this appendices is identify the existing sewer agreements and obligations that, uh, Lower Makefield Township currently has that have to be transferred and, and effectively implemented by, uh, Pennsylvania, uh, by Aqua Pennsylvania. Um, yeah, um, it goes through all of the transfer of the permits. You know, we, you know, we now, and, and we're in a process where we actually had some facilities that were, I'll call pre-regulatory, that actually weren't permitted. Um, so we actually have submitted them just, uh, literally, uh, Friday and, and today, all those permits into DEP so that they exist so that they can be transferred. That is important because, uh, the compliance of those permits, um, right now is in the name of Lower Makefield Township and/or Sewer Authority. Uh, they need to be transferred so that those obligations. I think James just entered.
Let's just, uh, wait until James gets in and I can transfer the gavel there.
Well, and, and this might help me because, yeah, Fred, E, are you on 5A at this point? I'm just trying to follow along with the agenda.
Yes, um, I'm doing the executive summary, so with, I, I'm kind of eight. I'm kind of going to have to combine all the, because they're all interrelated. Um, but yes, I am at 5A.
Okay, um. I'll just, I'll just keep holding my questions. What was that?
Ames, can you hear us?
I can. I am in.
Can you take over the gavel? You're still on me to, Chair.
If you can carry on Fred, there's still, we're still taxing.
Oh, you're in a plan, okay. Um, okay, go ahead Fred, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, so like I said, the, the, with the change in ownership comes and B and C kind of go, go hand in hand with each other. With the change in ownership really goes to that, 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 uh, all the operation and maintenance as well as, um, the billing, financial responsibilities, long-term operation and maintenance, capital reserve. All of that gets transferred over to, from the township, uh, to Aqua Pennsylvania. It identifies in there that they are a Public Utility Commission regulated entity and that any, you know, they have to comply with all the requirements of the Public, um, Utility Commission where the township can raise rates as it sees fit to maintain the operation and maintenance, their debt obligations and to establish a capital reserve program for the proper long-term operation and maintenance. Uh, now the change which is identified in here is that there is a level of scrutiny by the, uh, Public Utility Commission because obviously they can't vote out supervisors or vote for supervisors that will replace, uh, members of an authority. Uh, so the people have lost a little bit of control, uh, with just that one respect. Therefore, the Public Utility Commission is in there and it's unidentified so that people understand in the township's Act 537 Plan that this is a PUC regulated and there is another a- avenue that they can go through to voice a- any concerns as well as the fact that the, if there's any issues that the public has, that they don't believe that it, that their public, the wastewater needs of Lower Makefield Township. the wastewater needs of Lower Makefield Township are being adequately addressed. That first and fundamental change to that is in the Act 537. And that's how they would address it, by going to their elected officials, having their elected officials amend it to address any issues that would exist within the public sewer service area. Next item is a transfer of the existing agreements and obligations. The all the the majority of the agreements, I'll never say all, because there's always some minor agreements that could be a service contract related agreements, which is basically the Shammy Interceptor Agreement, the Yardley Borough Intermunicipal Agreement, the Morrisville Municipal Agreement, is all contained within this document so that it's very clear that Aqua Pennsylvania is stepping into and asserting all the responsibilities of that. We're also including all the more recent Act 537 Plan amendments, whether it be a special study, in the case of the Shammy or the Yardley Borough goes in there, that there's a clear identification of all the pump stations, the current capacity of those pump stations, as well as transferring the permits of those pump stations go through and by the transfer of obligations, I mean transfer of the permit requirements. So the compliance with all the water quality management permits are theirs. The last item in the executive summary, which I think is probably the most important, is that it does not change the public sewer service areas. I think that's the single most important thing on this, that while there's a new owner, the method of searing people, how it's conveyed through certain service areas, how it's going to the ultimate treatment, how the agreement that governs the treatment capacity, that is not changing. And Aqua Pennsylvania cannot change that because the first step in any of those changes is Act 537 planning, and they can't do that without you. You know, by the same token, you guys also have to be reasonable in going through and partnering with Aqua Pennsylvania, that, you know, if there is a major change, that there's enough time for them to be able to implement. While they're tasked with the means and methods of implementation, the schedule for them to implement it also has to be reasonable, that it requires, that it complies with all regulatory requirements. So that's really it for the summary of what the purpose and what the actually says. So what we have, we have an obligation to, is to go out and get comments from the Bucks County Planning Commission. The Bucks Planning Commission has provided us with a letter from them that we have received, knowing that identifying that the hearing date is February 21st. They do need to ratify this, but they provided this well in advance of that, so that the board could have. So we've provided them with a copy of it, and we've asked the Bucks County Planning Commission, how does this this change in selected alternatives for the sale of sewer system impact Bucks County Planning Commission and its ability to implement and its role in the growth and long-term planning for the county? And their comment was, you know, we commend the township officials for undertaking this update of the sewage facilities to facilitate the sale of resources. The special study is intended to supplement the township's existing sewage facilities planning documents and proposes no changes to the evaluation or planning of existing or future sewage facility disposal capacity or infrastructure, which is basically exactly what I have represented to you tonight. The Bucks County Planning Commission has agreed, that's their comment. I agree with their comment, and I think it's consistent with what we have done there and that when it's finally adopted by D P. So the process after this would be that it will, if it is adopted by resolution by the Board of Supervisors, it will go to D P. D P may have questions, which the township will have to respond to. It will ultimately be approved by D P. And Bucks County Planning, because they rely on this as part of the review of your Saldo or any other matters in Lower Makefield that come before Bucks County Planning Commission for land development, comprehensive planning, anything else, they need to have a copy of the final approved. So while you're approving it tonight, there's always, there's always a time when D P will ask for clarifications to any planning document, of which the township will respond to. It most likely will not require a new resolution, but may require some clarifications, which is routinely done, as it is with all planning documents, and the Board of Supervisors will be made aware of that. Because of responses to D P questions, we'll back on township letterhead. The second agency is the Department of Health, Bucks County Department of Health. And they basically have reviewed it and then and basically stated that it's being updated prior to the sale of sewer system to Aqua, focusing on the identification, evaluation of the existing sewage facilities, evaluation alternatives, identification of future operation and maintenance responsibilities after the sewer system is transferred. Their conclusion is that the study states Lower Makefield is entirely served by public sewers, although a limited number of properties remain on individual onlot sewer systems. Department, they then go on to say that the department requests that talks continue on the operation of Shady Farm Connection to Public Sewer. But then they go on with the most important statement. The department, meaning the Bucks County Health Department, has no adverse comments regarding the Lower Makefield Township Act 537 Sewer Specialty Special Study. Last review was with the Township Planning Commission. We actually went before the Planning Commission two occasions. I was not able to attend the first time that it was reviewed. I was able to attend the second time and provide, able to answer questions of the Township Planning Commission. And after much discussion and consideration, the Plan Commission recommended to approve the special study as a special study will not impact the Planning Commission's ability to regulate Saldo and zoning. But the township Planning Commission could not reach a consensus of any of an impact or any on the township's comprehensive, comprehensive plan. And I think that was primarily identification of what's a private system, what's not a sewer system. And they don't know how the comprehensive plan is there, could be impacted, because it's a hypothetical question. Whereas the zoning and the Saldo are defined regulations, so they can clearly make a determination of whether it had an impact or not on that. So that completes number six. Number seven is really, I've stressed this numerous times tonight, I just wanted to make sure that it was on the agenda, is that the the role of the township and P A D, the Act 537 planning moving forward, this sale does not impact that process at all, other than you will be partners and working in concert with Aqua Pennsylvania. But they're almost like a planning commission to you. Ultimately, you want to hear their recommendation, you want to work with them. But at the end of the day, it's your plan. You approve what you want to approve, you change it as you see fit, and or don't change it as you see fit. I will allow the board, I think we've pretty thoroughly identified the purpose of it, what it actually contains, and I would entertain any questions by the Board of Supervisors on the Act 537 Plan or what's there, and then I would like to will then review exactly what's in the resolution, so you understand exactly what you're approving.
Thank you, Fred. With that, I'll open up the questions from the supervisors. Supervisor Los, we'll start with you.
Sure. So Fred, is this the last time we're going to be seeing you?
Fortunately, probably, yes.
Okay, it's been a long time, four years?
At least, I think it's more than that.
Five?
Yeah.
No, six.
I think it's six.
Yeah.
I think it's six years, it's been a pleasure.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your service to the township. I had a series of questions, the first one kind of piqued my mind as we were going through the presentation. What would happen in the event of a merger with a neighboring municipality? How would that work out with respect to the 537 Plan and then sewer conveyance in general?
It would have to be, the first step in that would be P A D, sewage facilities planning approval, would be if there was a merger, both townships or both municipalities would need to have D P modify their Act 537 Plan to select the alternative of a merger. And it would go through the same exact process here, that there a merger couldn't be, would not be allowed by anyone without Act 537 planning approval.
And you're familiar, obviously, with the contract as well. Would that require us to get agreement from Aqua for that as well then?
In Act 537 Plan, the answer is yes, and I need to think about that. The merger would be subject to an agreement, which would be included in the Act 537 Plan. So Aqua would be a party to that agreement. That agreement would be the basis of the approval of an amendment to the Act 537 Plan. So while you technically could approve Act 537 Plan sewage facilities planning for a merger, I don't believe, I think D P would question the implementability of it without a draft or executed or agreement that would be ready to be executed that would include Aqua Pennsylvania as a party to that agreement.
Okay, so they would have to agree and we'd have to work through an agreement with Aqua then on any potential municipality merger then? Is what you're saying, they would have, they would have final say in some measure, or at least veto authority then?
Yeah, because D P would look at the implementation of the 537 planning. So you could, you guys could approve a merger. I don't believe that D P would approve it, because without that agreement of Aqua being online there, because I believe that they would say that you need to have an agreement to prove that this is implemental.
Okay. Similarly, there are parts of the township that are not developed, and as the Bucks County Health Department had mentioned, could be subject, or in some cases, they were suggesting that we encourage them to join the public sewer system. When that happens, right? What would be the process for that? Can you step me through that? So let me give you a hypothetical. Large, couple hundred acre parcel, not currently attached to the sewer conveyance system is to be developed. Right? How does that, what does, step me through that process?
Well.
537 Saldo and process.
Okay, well, your current 530, that's the opposite way from where I thought you were going to go. The entire township is in a public sewer service area. There's no areas that are identified for individual onlot sewer systems only.
We have a few.
Well, no, they're still in the public sewer service area. They're just serviced by individual onlot systems. So the 537 Plan would not change because they had access to public sewer. What would require is if it's more than 250 E D Us, planning module approval will be required. If there is a pump station or low pressure, planning would be required. If it was a simple extension of a gravity sanitary sewer out there and is less than 250 E D Us, there would be no Act 537 planning required. Where I thought you were going to go, and I'll answer this question, because I think it's a good question, is that let's say that there is a needs area of individual onlot systems that fail and have a pervasive failure. You could, the supervisors could do a special study or a component 3M planning module that would basically set an implementation schedule for public sewers to be extended out there and then to be connected. And then it will be the obligation of Aqua Pennsylvania to have that sewer system installed. And then, but the residents would have to pay the cost through the tapping fees.
Mr. You bring up actually kind of interesting economics question here, which is in the case of a large development going online, you're creating a large customer for Aqua with very little sort of infrastructure cost, because that would be borne, if I understand it, by the developer, right? So in theory, a new development could be a tremendous revenue boom to Aqua going forward, because they have an annuity revenue stream of, well, of sewage fees, which they mark up. But in the case of an onlot situation where you're extending the pipe, the revenue wouldn't be as appealing for them, correct? From an economics perspective?
Absolutely, yeah.
So. On the one hand, could the township capture any of that revenue for a new development that would be going, basically creating a new customer for Aqua that's could be significantly or a lucrative customer for them? In that case?
No.
No.
You sold your sewer system, you are, all the revenue generated obligations is now a P U C requirement. Nope, no.
Yeah. So additional question, I know, you know, you were involved in the analysis of our sewer system and gave guidance to professionals about that. In 2019, you had made mention of, you know, significant issues in terms of where we had I N I and helped develop a plan that the township followed pretty much to the letter of the law, correct? As far as what you had suggested at that time?
I would say absolutely, and probably exceeded it.
Right, probably exceeded it. And at that time, when the analysis were brought out, the theory was if we did that one increase at that time, that there wouldn't be a need for sewer rate increase until 2026, given what was was provided. And everybody sort of attested to that. You still believe, given that we did all that, that that would have been the case, correct?
I wasn't involved in the financial side of it. What I was involved in is what do we have to do to reduce our I N I? Given where we're at and the infrastructure, I was a human calculator to calculate what is the cost of the Silver Lake Pump Station upgrade? What is the cost of replacing the stack house? How much piping do you need a line each year to, in the long term, have a reduce our I N I such that there is a financial payback? Because our treatment costs are less than that. I provided what all those costs were and a hierarchy of that. I wasn't involved in the rate setting.
Okay, but you would say that we did follow exactly everything you suggested then?
I would say yes, yeah, I would say that without question, that we implemented the plan very well.
Right, and now, one of the things that was interesting is, did you at any time suggest that that our sewer system was at risk for catastrophic failure? Because I reviewed all of the board minutes, all the sewer committee meetings, I'd never heard that term catastrophic failure. Did you advise the board of that at ever, at any time?
Catastrophic failure, the only the only things that, like I clearly said, and I believe was that we needed to replace the metal can at the Brookstone Pump Station, because the it was rising out of the ground and it was going to rupture. And if we did not replace that with new submersible pumps, that, I mean, I don't know what you want to consider catastrophic, but I would say that that would be a catastrophic failure if we hadn't done that. You know, that we would have, if we had not replaced the Stack House Pump Station, that we could no longer buy parts for it, we could not access it to maintain it. To me, catastrophic failure, I don't like to use the term catastrophic, it's tough, but to me, a significant overflow or hundreds of thousands of gallons of untreated wastewater is overflowing, is catastrophic. So, you know, so those two in particular, I would say. in particular, I would say absolutely, th- that we have murdered that, but, but by doing that, most of the other work that I was looking at, um, so the catastrophic failure would mostly be with the steel cans that are now thirty to forty years old, that, 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 that were in there for pump stations. That would be what I would consider our highest risk for catastrophic failure uh on there.
You'd never suggested that the system in any way was at risk for catastrophic failure.
No, just, just, I swear, I, I swear to God, absolutely.
I swear to God. Yeah. Now, were you involved in the drafting? Do you, this is a, a notice, a proposed rate acquisition and rate base addition. Did you, did you see this one? I don't know if you can see this. You probably can't. Now, so.
Is that from Aqua Pennsylvania?
Well, interestingly, there's a letter, there's a, 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 a letter from Aqua. And then there's a letter that purports to be from Lower Makefield Township, that's the cover letter to that. And, and were you involved in that at all?
No.
Okay.
Is there a date or something that you might help reference it?
Well, the letter's undated.
That letter went out when Aqua sent their, their required notice from the P U C out.
Okay, I'm just trying to help. I mean, but there's no way that Fred can actually see. I can, can't even see it, so I just.
Oh, oh, I'll hit it to you in just a second.
And John, as to relevance to the five thirty seven plan, can you make the connection?
Yep, pardon me. And I like to say to the chair or acting chair in this time, this is, this is my time. Uh, it is relevant. It's directly related to five thirty seven plan, because it relates.
That's great. I, I just asked you to make the connection, or I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to move on.
Do anything. This is my time.
Actually, actually, John, you have, you have, you have plenty of time. I'm not gonna limit you.
I'm not gonna limit you. I'm reclaiming my time. I'll be reclaiming my time.
John, you can claim, you can claim whatever time you want.
All night. I will be reclaiming my time all evening. Is that clearly understood? Is that clearly understood?
All I'm doing.
Mr. Chair, is that clearly understood?
Gentlemen, can we?
John, John, please, I'm just asking you to, to, to keep it relevant.
Ask me, this is my time. This is my time.
He has every right to.
Actually, as, as, as the acting chair, I have that privilege to ask you that question.
Directly, hold on.
If you wish, if you wish to, uh.
He's interrupting me.
John, I'm just asking the question.
Continue.
You, I'm allowing you to continue, but I just have that question. I'd like you to answer.
It relates directly to pages thirteen and fourteen of the special study that uh, Mr. Ebert presented this evening. Okay?
Thank you.
All right. The letter says, "In any event, the township rate would have been higher had the township kept the sys- uh, kept the system given future construction and capital requirements." And this is without factoring in a catastrophic failure of the system, catastrophic failure. Now, Mr. Ebert, in your discussion, you said that, yes, there could have been components of one of a pump house that could have been at risk for catastrophic failure. But at no time, you, you never have suggested that the system was at risk for catastrophic failure, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That was the, the point of my uh question there. I'd also like to continue a little bit about East Norton and Sheltonham. You had mentioned those two municipalities. They both had similar special studies, correct?
Yes.
And they were both purchased by Aqua, correct?
Yes, they go for it, yes.
Okay. What was their, do you know what their rate increase was in August of twenty, uh, twenty twenty one that they went to the P U C for?
No, no.
Okay, well, I, I did a quick search. It was thirty-three percent. That's actually higher than the notice of proposed acquisition rate base addition from, um, I guess this letter's from Aqua. Um, the reason why I bring these up um, rather directly, I don't think anybody has any illusions. They know exactly where I stand on this particular issue and why. Um, and so with the, the risk of uh, being excessively contentious, I will say that, um, I oppose uh, the, the sale of the sewer system. Um, you know, tonight's a day where, you know, I should take the loss, right? Obviously, it's over. This is, again, the celebration for those who are in favor of the sale of the sewer system. And, and there was no, there was barely a, an ability to muster a quorum, which is frustrating. But for me, when you looked at this, Fred, you counseled other supervisors that you said you didn't understand why we were building all this stuff out if we were eventually going to sell the sewer system. And, and you did say we did all those things to the letter. Given all that you've seen, would you have selected Aqua as the preferred bidder?
I'm, that's the beauty of my job is I don't have a vote on that. What I was asked for was to come up with a budget of if we're not going to sell this, what's it gonna cost to properly maintain where we're at to where we gotta go, knowing that even the lining of everything was there. Um, so I unfortunately am, I've gotta say, that's the beauty of my.
You're gonna take the fifth, and that's.
I'm gonna take the fifth and say, I, 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 I unfortunately don't have a, don't have a vote on that. Um, but I will tell you that, that, that it, you saw the impact of what we needed to do uh, in the short term to kind of write it, to, to get us on, on, on a path of that if we were going to keep this system of what we had to do in order to, to, to get it around. Um.
And you should be just.
Proud of, of the progress we made in the last two years.
Yeah, you, you should be proud, right? We, yeah, we, as a board said, we have to do this to make sure that the system is sound, right?
Yep.
We did all those things and the system is sound. And at no time was it ever at risk for catastrophic failure, right? Um, which is why when I read your report, there was nothing in there that said that there was catastrophic failure. Yet residents were told, well, they were at risk of catastrophic failure, uh, which I think is, is misleading. And given where you had said, and you're not willing to say that that's the case, so clearly, there's something awry here. Again, the letter from the township doesn't have a signer. So I don't know whether that was voted, it was not voted on by the board of supervisors, so that does not reflect.
The letter was from me.
Okay. Did that, in your mind, reflect an accurate assessment of where we stood?
Absolutely.
That's against what he just said.
Not what he said, because you're taking out of context what that meant. What, no, no, I am. Let me answer the question, and then you can still tell me I'm wrong. The letter basically said the outline of the costs as we've projected, as Mr. Ebert said, which were a short-term lining project that may not, will take sixty years to get done, that those costs would be set unless there was essentially a catastrophic failure. For example, something that was going on that we could not predict that would not be covered by that current rate base, whether that be a pump station, whether that be a rupture because of weather, a catastrophic failure, the same way he described a pump station catastrophic failure of hundreds of thousands of gallons of sewage would not necessarily be something that we contemplated in the rate as it was currently outlined.
But then are you saying that what you had said in uh, November and December of twenty nineteen, when you were asking the board to approve the twenty twenty budget was wrong?
Of course not.
Well, you can't have it both ways.
I'm not having it both ways. In twenty, no, no, no. In twenty nineteen, we set the rate so that we could start lining pipes at a minimal level. It'll take sixty years to mu- to line twenty-five percent of the town. So what Mr. Ebert was saying was that we got started, we were getting started because we had not done any lining in the history of the township. We did it for one year and no other years. This was an attempt for us to begin to show D E P that we were serious about lining. And that in the end, if they decided we needed to up how much we were doing, or that I N I sub- increased substantially, that we may have to increase because D E P may not find that to be adequate. But to get started, since we were doing nothing, it pacified them for the time that we got started. So in that, just remember, we're doing several hundred thousand dollars a year in lining. And it would take sixty years to get through between twenty-five and thirty percent of the town at the rate that we're currently doing it.
However, you said at that time that if we implemented exactly what you said, that we would not have a rate increase for twenty twenty-six, till twenty twenty-six.
That's correct.
Okay, so, which argues the case, then why would you sell the sewer system if you knew you were guaranteed no rate increase till twenty twenty-six?
Because in twenty twenty-six, there would be a seventy to eighty percent increase potentially with this, with the.
You never presented a seventy to eighty percent.
Sure we did. Fifty million dollars translated on an amortization rate over twenty years, frankly, is around sixty-four, sixty-five percent. So at the time, it would have been around sixty to seventy percent.
Now.
On fifty million dollars, and we looked at four options, and they were all fifty to sixty-five million dollars.
Last time I checked here, though, uh, that liability doesn't go away. The difference is that Aqua America gets to mark that up and pass that on to ratepayers.
And also pass that on in an economy of scale that it's not being passed on to twelve thousand ratepayers, it's being passed on to several hundred thousand ratepayers.
Yes, but, hold on, part a second. If, if the township manager wants to engage in debate over policy issues, which is really not the, you know, it was my time.
Okay, I'm gonna interject.
Pardon, you're not gonna do anything.
This is irrelevant to the special study.
My time.
Your, your time is now done. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be mean.
I'll be reclaiming my time.
Unless, unless you want to continue on as, as relevant to the special study, John.
And again, relevant to the special study.
I'm, I'm gonna have my virtual gavel and say, we're gonna move on to.
You don't have a gavel here, so let me complete, pardon.
It's just, just keep your, just keep your discussions and questions and comments to the five thirty seven plan.
And I have.
The time, the time for pontificating on the appropriateness of the sale is, is long gone. But, but, and you can do that, you can do that on your social media page. You can do that, uh, when you, when you, you can talk about other public comment. You can do that whenever you want, but right now, we're talking about the special study, the five thirty seven plan. And if you want to keep it relevant, you can speak to your heart's content. But when you want to go off, off the, uh, the rails, I'm gonna act as chair and say.
Off, I haven't got off the rails. Everything I have said.
Actually, actually, there's nothing, there's nothing relevant to the five thirty seven plan special study that you're talking. Now you're talking about the appropriateness or inappropriate of the sale, which I'm happy to listen to all night. But I'd like to keep this meeting go, uh, just keep the meeting running.
Okay, so let me finish up. I began my discussion about contingencies and changes in the municipality structure of Lower Makefield. And then I discussed the impact of development or new development as it relates to the special study, the five thirty seven plan. All again, very germane to that. I asked the township engineer about the status of, of the facilities that are the conveyance system, again, directly relevant under page thirteen and page fourteen of the special study, which actually discusses the process around this. Again, all exactly relevant to exactly what we're talking about and was it on the agenda? I was gonna begin my final discussion about this when I was interrupted in terms of what I was going to say. Okay, I'm not gonna change any minds tonight. I understand that. Very comfortable with that. I just want the record to accurately reflect the questions that I asked Mr. Ebert related to the system, the, the status of the system. And I got those answered. They are directly related to the five thirty seven plan, okay? At this time, I'm gonna yield back the balance of my time. I completely pleaded my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John. It's, and it's good to know that your, your comments about the appropriateness of the sale did not have, have anything to do with the special study, but of course, you did have very germane comments when you were talking about the special study.
Mr. Chair, I think you've gone past your.
Actually, actually, your, your time is now over. You, you said you were done. I'll come back to you if we just need any more comments from.
I'd gently ask.
I'll now recognize Ms. Blundy, Supervisor Blundy, uh, go for it.
Thank you. Um, Fred, I, I feel like my questions are gonna pale in comparison, but at the beginning of the evening, you, you talked about, um, part of the reason we have to do this is to make sure all the documents line up. You know, we, we remain uh, an entity in terms of the five thirty seven plan and, and the land that is within Lower Makefield Township. But just to make it crystal clear, should the sale be approved, who's going to be billing customers going forward?
Aqua Pennsylvania.
People should be looking for bills in the future, should this deal go forward from Aqua Pennsylvania.
Yeah.
Unless they change their name.
Yeah, and, and, and it would, yeah, I mean, um, and it's Aqua Pennsylvania Wastewater, Inc. I'm not sure what the actual bill will, will say. Um, the only clarification that I would have on this, and I'd ask Kurt probably to correct me, or, or to feel like me, is that, I'm not sure if we build, there may be one additional bill that goes out on Lower Makefield Township, and we would collect that money, and we would still collect any monies due while we owned and operated the facility. Um, so I'm not sure. I believe they're trying to end it on a clear billing cycle. But depending on when that transfer comes, or maybe one more bill, but moving forward after the current billing cycle is over, all the bills will go, come from Aqua Pennsylvania and or their affiliate.
There, there'll be a meter reading at the end of February with the last bill. Bucks County Water and Sewer does do the billing. John was asking, or asking about the date. So they've essentially given the thirty day notice, essentially that it's the, because it's the last billing cycle. So the last bill will go out first couple of days of March. Um, we will actually will have a note on the Bucks County Water and Sewer Bill that this is your last bill from Lower Makefield Township. And your subsequent bills, which would be, let's say, mid-April, would start happening on a month-to-month basis. And as long as we're saying this, we tell people in the end, if you're paying through your bank, to make sure you get your new code, because in the end, if you pay with the same old code with the Aqua bill, it would not be Aqua that would be paid. It would be Bucks County Water and Sewer. We'll put those notices up, send some stuff on Facebook, but it will be on every bill coming out next, 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 or two weeks.
All right, thank you. And really, I'm just trying to help people understand that there is kind of a duality that will continue long past the twenty days or the thirty days when the last bill goes out. Because we, as the owners of the five thirty seven plan, will still always have a vested role in ensuring um, compliance and, and that things are handled the way they were intended to be handled under the plan. And you pointed out, Fred, that for enforcement purposes, that obligation and the the big stick behind all that will be D E P enforcing any problems should they come down the pipe. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that's the same way it's enforced right now. D E P will, you know, D E P is the regulatory authority.
Okay, thank you very much.
Fred, may I ask a question? Red Weiss.
Red Weiss, can Kurt ask a question?
Yes, go ahead, Kurt.
Fred, only because I have been asked this, and I've actually had some people, a couple of people who have come in and asked the question, and you mentioned this briefly in your uh, initial summary under number four. Okay, my question for you is about the lateral ordinance. You know, we are implementing that as well. Jonathan in your office reviews those videos when we get them, uh, to either give them the all clear or in those relatively rare, but not, um, but not happen several times a year when there's something wrong with the lateral. My question for you is about that process itself. We would still issue the lateral certificate. But if there was a problem that needed to be resolved, can you discuss like how that works as far as, if you're aware, like the interaction with Aqua for someone who would not get that lateral permit, or we had to put a hold, we've never held up, or um, we have never stopped a property from closing, right? But both property owners would be aware that there's a problem. My question is, is, and I know we've had some discussions in the last few months, but how that would work, if there, if a property owner would see anything different. Clearly, we would be coordinating or communicating with Aqua. But is there anything specifically you can speak to about that process?
Well, that process actually doesn't change because you're not selling that portion of the sewer system. What, what will change is that if there's a deficiency in the public portion of the sanitary sewer lateral, that, that will go from Lower Makefield Township's responsibility to Aqua Pennsylvania. But on the private, that still remains exactly how it is today. That, that, that the enforcement of the ordinance, it, it's an ordinance, so it's only enforced by the township. Aqua has no uh, control over that, uh, either positive or negative. Uh, so that still remains a sole responsibility of the township.
And, and then I just have one more question. I'm sorry. So back in twenty twelve, um, there was a, um, Bucks County Water and Sewer had put a, essentially a moratorium on building permits because of um, the lack of follow-through from pressure with D E P on implementation of a five thirty seven plan. Not that I would anticipate that would happen again. But in the event that that did, I mean, is that resolved by the township bringing suit against Aqua? Um, like, what, do you have any insights on that?
Basically, what we would do is we would actually amend. Basically, what we would do is we would actually amend the Act 537 plan to include what's known as a corrective action plan. And then Aqua Pennsylvania would have to implement that. If they did not implement that, then DEP would actually take action against Aqua. So we wouldn't have to sue them. It would actually be DEP would take enforcement action. And enforcement action, it's not a lawsuit, it's implementation of fines. Well, up to $10,000 per day per violation to, to do that.
Because our moratorium we had here was like seven years. And I just wanted to make sure that like we wouldn't be left there sort of floating out in no man's land dealing with a PUC company if they let that go.
Yes, and, and, and where we really look at that is the township still should look at the Chapter 94 report every year to make sure they're implementing the corrective action plan and that the flows adjusted for development connections are trending downward. You know, I mean, we've very clearly trended significantly downward. I would say that half of it's our work, half of it, it hasn't been as rainy. You know, quite honestly, I can't take full credit for that. But we've seen a significant reduction in our flows that way. So, you know, I, I think the township still has to be diligent, you know, and, and look at Chapter 94 reports. And, and you will. How will you? Because any planning module that goes through needs a component 3J or a capacity certification. So the township, when they review their planning modules, should be reviewing this and should be making sure that there's adequate capacity and that the Chapter 94 is a five-year projection out. The township will still have to be working with Aqua Pennsylvania on the Chapter 94 reports. We still will be giving them how many connections were made and what are our future connections? So there's, there's plenty of planning tools that we need to look at. And this is why I stressed with the sewer authority before, the importance of the Chapter 94, that we were looking at projected overloads. You know, so we have a identification five years out. Now, quite honestly, do some developments come up sooner than a five-year horizon? But that's why we need to provide that to Aqua, so that, that we're not in that situation.
Thanks, Fred.
James, are you?
I am, yep, I am here. You will not be able to see me visually, but I am here. I just had one quick question, a point of clarification. I don't necessarily know if it's, you know, germane to this, but Kirk Ferguson, you mentioned the, the transition or the transaction part of, you know, real estate as far as sewer laterals during that process. Just to be clear, at this point, if, if there is an issue with the sewer lateral, that wouldn't hold up closing, is there a process where, you know, the, the money for repairs would be held in escrow? Is that, is that something that the broker deals with or is that something that the township deals with?
At this point, that would be something that the parties participating in the sale would deal with. What we do is they would be required to make that improvement one way or another. I mean, essentially, if the property closes, it would be on the new property owner. But they would be going in with the understanding, knowing that that is a requirement. It's almost like a home inspection when, if you're going to participate in the sale, that that would be agreed upon. But, but again, if the transfer took place, then it would be the new property owner's responsibility to take care of. So it would be those parties participating in that private sale.
So in, in similar municipalities where they have, say, a use and occupancy and there is something that's holding up use and occupancy because the, you know, it fails for a certain reason, you know, a township may issue a temporary use and occupancy. So that's not something that we're currently doing as far as the sewer laterals. We're just, we're just basically saying, allowing it to happen and then putting the onus of responsibility on the new, on the new owner, correct?
That, I mean, what you're, the way you're describing the UNO is essentially the way that this would work. We would allow for that to go, to go forward. But that would be a citation that would be active on that site that we would give a certain amount of time. And in those three or four instances where we've had that happen, we've had communication with both buyer and seller to understand that they, that they, that they were clear on that.
Good, clear enough. I didn't have anything else to add. I think the presentation spoke for itself. Fred Ebert, I appreciate you putting it together. I apologize to my fellow supervisors. I was held up in the airport. So thank you for, for, for your patience, but I appreciate it. And thanks, Fred Weiss, for holding it down.
No problem, James. Fred, I just have a couple of questions. When we, when we approved the 537 plan, we, we had a timeline of six years. We budgeted X number of dollars, I think $2.3 million a year for the, for the next six years. That's, that was how we determined our, our, our rate increase. The last time we had a rate increase, I think it was two years ago, three years ago. I forget. How does, how does the sale to Aqua? Or does it, does it change the timeline at all? Does it affect the timeline? Is the timeline strictly a township parameter or is it part of the agreement for sale?
The exact line items of the budget and what we approved is not, as mine are saying, it's not a, a requirement of the sale. Compliance with the corrective action plan is. So really, what we have lined out, and we actually, I would say the majority of those are still a requirement of our corrective action plan. Our budget implemented our corrective action plan. So I would say that I'm going to correct that. Aqua is responsible for that. So, you know, we identified that in our corrective action plan and they would need to comply with our corrective action plan. I mean, the only thing that might not have been, we got planning approval in our 537 plan for the pump station upgrades. I would say the vast majority, yes. There, there may have been some pump station upgrades that we had factored in our budget that there may or may, that may not be obligated to. But as a practical matter, they have to. I mean, there are certain things they have to do. So even though it may not be in a corrective action plan, it is so obvious and such a requirement that they don't have a choice. We don't have any, we didn't have any gold plating in our budget that Aqua can cut out. They are all requirements to comply with the corrective action plan and are previously approved at 537 plan. So there is nothing there that they is arbitrary that they could cut out to save money and make profit.
Okay. Supervisor Lewis mentioned about a possible merger between systems. I wanted to explore that just a little bit further. If Aqua owns the sewer system, for all intents and purposes, how does the township entertain a merger with a neighboring municipality?
They, while, while you could do planning for it, Aqua would have to be a party to the agreement for that merger in order for DEP to approve it. And in order for me, if I was doing your 537 plan, I would not prepare a plan that is not implementable. The only way that a merger is implementable is if all necessary parties have, have come to an agreement and a documented written agreement of how it will be implemented. So.
So basically, I'm just going, I'm going to give a couple hypotheticals just to, so I can clear my own mind. If, say Yardley Borough decided to sell their system to Aqua, that would be Aqua's responsibility to deal with the borough. We wouldn't be part of it.
That's correct.
Okay. Say a large, we have a large parcel of land that, that's owned, you know, that's owned by a landowner. His property extends inner township between one township and another, maybe even three townships. If he decides to develop, if the property is developed and to all three townships and there's a contiguous sewer system between the three townships, would the 537 plan have to be modified by the township and the other two municipalities to get this development in place so that Aqua and with Aqua, so that DEP can handle a new 537 plan? Is that where that?
Yes, it, 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 there would have to be an amendment to the Act 537 plan to allow that to happen. If the flow direction changes, treatment provider, or even the flow path changes, that would, that, that, that's a significant change that would have to come back to this board.
Okay, okay. And of course, if one municipality decided to merge with another municipality, that would also cause a, an Act 537 change and.
Absolutely.
Okay, totally hypothetical, I'm just trying to grasp my head around. All right, great. I have no more questions. I'll open it to the public at this time. Is there any public comment?
Fred, can I first say something if I could? So Fred, I don't know if you wanted to bring this up now, but because we did do the advertisement and had a 30-day public input timeframe, we did offer the opportunity for anyone to send in emails with public comment, questions, commentary, whatever it would be. And I had checked with Katie, my assistant, at 7:15 leading into this meeting. And to, up to that point in time, which I guess we're past the expiration, there had not been any email submissions.
Is there anyone on the line?
No public comment online.
At this point, I guess we'll entertain a motion to to approve the resolution 22-5.
Still moved.
We're here a second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 22-5, signify by saying aye and raise your hand.
I did say aye.
Hey Suzanne, I did not hear anything, but I saw your hand up.
Yeah, no, I said aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Okay. The odds have it, 3-1. Resolution 22-5 is approved. We'll go to item 11, general public comment. Is there anybody on the line?
No public comment online.
Okay. There being no other business before the board, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
I just want to say goodbye and thank you guys. It's been a pleasure to serve you guys.
Fred, I have a feeling we'll see you again.
Good night, Fred.
Thank you guys. Bye.